Bob Tucker. Dennis Barnum. Ignacio Legre. Sandy Anino. Anthony Sandoval. Anna Jimenez-Hami.
Here.
Jackie Rosso Garcia. Jorge Martinez. Anna Patricia Kurier. Lucina Solorsano. Thank you, we have corn.
Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
now turning for public comments. Public comments will be held during the beginning or beginning of our comments on the agenda. Are there any public comments in this? Is that calendar items or their excuse?
None, none.
Okay. It's a calendar, business calendar, contract amendment.
Excuse me, Bob, we need to vote on the something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's gonna be the specific. Is there a motion to approve the consent? And for the discussion on the consent founder, hearing any, all those included, please say aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to the business calendar, contract amendment to New Orange County Children's Therapy Art Center, recommended action to recommend the Workforce Development Board's form to a request to city council to amend the agreement with the Orange County Children's Therapy Art Center to increase the agreement by one hundred thousand dollars to serve an additional ten youth is doing motion to approve. Okay, is there second? Is there second?
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, discussion.
Well, as you all recall, at the last meeting, if you're back, we were all in, you had recommended that we move forward with increasing the current providers that had gone through the request for RP, the rating and so forth, then increase their amount to be able to meet and being compliant with their twenty percent work experience expenditure. And so that led to this initial action item, which increased Orange County Children's Therapeutic Art Center, and then also asked the work center to serve some youth and provide additional work experience, and so we're moving forward with those recommendations that you guys had and suggestions at the previous meeting, and so that's where.
Is there any other expression or input on this item at this time? Hearing any, we'll call the question, how in favor of approving the recommendation item two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Abstentions noted. Question. Oh, sure, I'm sorry. The, that's for an additional ten youth, how many current or previous to that?
Twenty.
Twenty.
So it'll be a total of thirty.
Okay. Okay, the motion that carries with one abstention, that is the end of the business calendar. We'll go on to reports, the West.
Yes, so currently Juan Casares, which normally provides an overview of what's been going on with the WISP, and he is at the CD, excuse me, CWA Youth Conference, every year, you know, there's an annual conference, which I know some of Dr. Anna's and OC's, uh, OCTAC's staff is at the conference, so they're not here, although we know we do have somebody that will report out. I'm excited to see what, um, what's transpiring over at the conference, they always have good information and workshops, and their keynote speakers are fabulous, they also have quite a few youth that come in to the conference and provide feedback, which is always important when we're running a youth program, because we want programs, we want to make sure that it's not adult-based only, but we're getting some advice and information from the youth, so it's always good to get some of that feedback from the youth at the conference. Additionally, I know they had been working on meeting their enrollments for this current year, and I won't touch on that, because they know Dr. Anna's team's going to be reporting out on that information. We do have a job fair coming up.
Well, that will be in the staff comment.
Okay. Okay, and so other than that, I think I'll leave it to Orange County Therapeutic Art Center to report on their current activities.
Yes, so I've provided you guys with colors, packets for the current year and the follow-up. Okay, so we can get started, so currently, year twenty-three, twenty-four, this is a summary so far, so for this year, we've enrolled a total of nineteen participants, and we did not carry over any youth from last year's, from twenty-two, twenty-three. From the nineteen, eighteen are of basic skills deficiency, thirteen are low income, five of them have poor work history, fifteen have disabilities, one is foster youth, and then we have one parenting youth. Fifteen of our youth are out of school or are in school, and from those, let's see. Back into the next page, so from those, let's try to pick the number of youth that each website placement in our year, so currently, we have youth placed at a healthcare clinic or medical office, the technological arts, they're also in digital arts media, we have some doing office clerks and administrative assistants, and then we have a dance and art program as well. Seventeen out of our nineteen youth are currently doing work experience. One participant is working as a barista at Starbucks, and then another one is working part-time at Autozone, while also working at OCTAC, so he's doing two. Nine of our participants are doing the digital arts and media rounds internships, five participants are in the technological arts, two of our youth are doing office clerk work, and then on, at the same time, one of them is also doing office work for the medical clinic, and also doing admin at OCTAC, so two sites, and another participant is participating in dance assistance and arts, and they're also doing, yeah. Nine participants are attending school, two of those are in high school, two are enrolled in Santa Ana College, we have one attending North Orange Continuation Education, one is enrolled in Fullerton Community College, another participant is attending Coastline City Community, and two participants began attending a four-year university, one is a freshman, yes, one is a freshman at Cal State Fullerton, and the other one is attending Cal Poly. So now we're going to move on to our follow-ups from last year, so we enrolled twenty last year, twenty of them were basic skills deficient, fifteen are low income, three were homeless, eleven had poor work history, five had disabilities, four foster youth, and three parenting youth. So moving on to the next page, out of the twenty youth that we had, ten are currently employed and ten are enrolled in co-secondary education. One participant is currently working in Disneyland as a merchandiser seller, another of our participants is a teacher assistant at SA USC, another participant is in the IT department at OCTAC, two participants work as office clerks, we have one participant that works as an ABA therapist at ACES, one participant is a cashier in Yogurtland, two participants work as caregivers, and one participant, participant is a cashier at Party City. And from the ten youth that are attending college, six are enrolled at SAC, two are attending Orange Coast College, and then two participants are attending a four-year university, both at Cal State Fullerton, and one of them graduates next year with a bachelor's in engineering. And the other one in computer science as well. Any questions, comments?
I don't see the one that does the job at the health clinic here from the.
Oh, I see.
That's a new.
Oh, you know what it is, Dr. Anna, we, we, we put it together with office clerk, is what it was, too.
Okay, but that's a health, that's a medical.
It is a medical office, so she, she is in a medical office, and then another one is at a different, um, doing office work. Thanks. Yes.
For the two participants who live in the county college, did that do you guys partnership, or was it through them?
No, so we help them enroll, usually they come to us, and then we, we help them fill it out, and then they go.
Probably helping them how to read the course catalog.
Yeah.
Figure out what courses you should.
Exactly.
Go in, hoping to enroll in.
Yeah, we discuss, you know, what are you interested in, and then from there, we talk about what to major in, or what courses are offered, and we, we, we guide them in that direction, definitely.
The, here were seventeen of the nineteen just are currently doing work experience at OCTAC, the, the digital arts media, those participants and so many others, are they in a program, or are they actually assisting with that program for others?
Yeah, so we have an internship program, and it's video production and digital arts, so they're learning the skills, is what it is.
And those two were caregivers, and I think there's such a huge need for caregiving, and many seniors want to be in their own homes, the last part of their life, and so caregiving is such an important thing, it was good to see.
Yeah, definitely, I agree.
Great, Josh.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to staff member comments.
I'll turn it up to Sandy.
So we do have a couple of things to report on, I know we've been really busy, I'm kind of chit-chatting with Deborah, we've been going over quite a few things that are happening with the state employment program, with the youth, and in general, just services provided out. Currently, I know we are working with CTE and Settleback to do a job fair, and our staff is working to do a job fair on February sixteenth, from ten to two P M., I can definitely send out the information, I wish I would have printed out the flyers, but I will definitely make sure to get that over to you guys after this meeting, so you guys can share with all the youth, I know we did forward it to staff and so, and all our partners, so they should have the information. Jennifer with CTA at Valley High School, they're very good at bringing all the youth, so there's always a huge number of youth that attend, I want to say, they had buses and buses and buses that came in to hire.
Settleback High School. It is a holiday for San Antonio Unified, it's on President's Weekend, so that Friday and Monday, they're off.
Yeah.
Which is why the high school's able to host it, but the kids that are wanting to look for summer jobs or employment, they will be, they'll be all in toll to go.
And so we have our business team working at helping with getting employers, and then some of my say employment staff will be going out there to not only man a booth, but they'll also be helping with the day logistics and anything that's needed during that day, to make sure that it's a successful event, every year, it's been quite busy, and it's nice to see a lot of youth attend and get information and get jobs, which is always really great. So that will be happening on February sixteenth, currently, we just submitted an application for California for all funding for this upcoming year, we're hoping that we, to find out what the outcome of that is in March, and so we're excited about that, and we are working in that process, we are working with the library to collaborate with them, and hopefully bring what we've been wanting to bring is AI robotics into, into the youth programs, and so between myself and my colleague over at the library, we were able to figure out some, they already do a great job with the robotics program, and so they're currently going to be working on providing workshops, career exploration with SEAL Alliance, or the youth, and so I'm like, how can we partner so that our state employment kids and our California for All Youth and our Rioa Youth can get information on, on this, and so I have incorporated them into the application for the California for All, so we don't know what's going to happen with that, however, because they're so excited to work and collaborate with the population that we're working with, regardless of the fact we're moving forward with that collaboration, funding or no funding, they'll figure out a way to make it happen, and so we're going to be hopefully housing them here, at least three of their staff to provide that information. One of the things that they do have, as she mentioned to me, Cheryl Everly, was robotics and AI technology for individuals with disabilities and so forth, so I'm excited to learn more about that, I'm not going to pretend I know, because I don't, I'm not even going to put out the verbiage out there, but we're excited to learn with the youth and bring them on board, so that's exciting news to announce, and then also, I, we were able to get a connection with mental health services, and they could get funding to provide information and knowledge and put it out into the community, and so I was able to connect with this individual, and she, between the two of us, we've been able to bring mental health training, and I know a lot of your staff have attended our trauma-informed training, we're work, we also provided mental health first aid training, which gave a big overview, it was an entire day training on mental health from all the different disorders, what that means, how to address, how to look for signs, and so we will have, my goal is to have at least one to two trainings every month, until we go through a list of different trainings, I know something that staff had mentioned, and I have heard also from our providers, not just recently, but also in the past years, is we don't always know how to treat or provide the resources, or just look for certain things, because that we're not experts in it, and so this is a way for us to make sure that we're treating, or not, excuse me, not treating, but helping and providing the resources that are needed for individuals with mental health. So that's exciting, and I offer it, it's open to anybody who's interested in joining us, I know there is room, at the last few trainings, we had about twenty-two individuals, there are not only my staff, but also the library staff, we had our partners and our sub-grant subcontractors there also, so we're excited about that connection also. Thank you, I think that was it.
I can't think of anything right now. I'm sure.
Council committee member comments, you do have somebody, if you'd like to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, good afternoon, happy to be here, my name is Carlos Acevedo, I'm a social worker, and my colleague is Cindy Solorsano, Lucy, she did say that she was having a little bit of trouble getting herself over here, and did actually ask if maybe she could like be like virtual, but I don't know if that's an option.
Not yet.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot going through, we're hoping.
Text her back and I'll be to say no. But she did have something to say, and unfortunately, I guess she's not here, but I believe, and I'm not, you know, when she comes next time, she'll, I guess she'll say, but something about maybe not being able to participate anymore, and so that's why she's bringing me along.
So, so we, will you be her potential replacement?
That, yes.
Oh, well, we're excited to have you.
Glad to be here, yeah.
I'll definitely touch bases with her and.
Yes.
Then fill her in on the meeting, what transpired, and then get her information, and see how we can work through that to potentially get your point.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
So we can take it to the youth, or to the workforce board in March for appointment.
Awesome, okay, thank you. Other council committee members. For the mental health training, was it recommended by the state?
No, it was something that staff, because we had been experiencing quite a few youth coming in, and I do have fairly new staff, and so they were, they did come to me with questions, how, there's this particular situation, how do we go about it, what are the different resources, and so we did provide the resource, but it did take more time with training and information and grabbing those resources, as opposed, resources as opposed to already knowing them, and knowing how to better address any circumstances or scenarios that come our way, and so this was my opportunity to train my staff, and then also open the doors to anybody that are partners to come in and also get the information, particularly our providers, and then now that we're working closely with the library, I also invited the library and even. The Conservation Corps, so that they can come in, but you are welcome, if you are interested, I can forward you the information for our next one, I do have a couple more coming up, I want to say at the end of this month, and then we have two more coming up in March. And then there was a list, this particular individual I met at my, at my kid's school that just happened to be connected to mental health, and we got into a conversation, and she's like, oh, yeah, we provide mental health training, I'm like, oh, and so then I started asking questions, I'm like, well, is there a cost, she goes, no, it's free to the public, any agency or organization that is interested in learning, they go to high schools, they go to junior high schools to provide for youth and or for individuals like ourselves that are not professionally trained in dealing with individuals with mental health issues, so I was like, this is perfect opportunity for us to learn and better our knowledge on treating individuals with mental health.
Question, Sandy, what topics do you have in mind for the month of March?
Um, one of the ones that I did want to learn more on is how to better provide services and inclusivity to individuals from the LGTQ community, and so I'm looking to learn more about that, I know there's two trainings on that, and so we're making sure that we bring it in-house to learn, until the staff is aware of that, we started off first with the mental health, and then we're moving forward on that, there's also mind-body, how to deal with stress, how to set boundaries, and things of that nature.
Great.
So I did forward it to.
Yes.
Your staff, Doran, Andrea, so that they can join us.
Great.
Iris, too.
Easy.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, they're welcome, and I, I open the door to anybody else that's interested. EDD also joined us, I was invited to a couple of our trainings, and so they joined us.
Yeah, they, they said the training was really, really good, and quite helpful, actually, especially at any center of many of the staff, especially the employment, workforce staff, they may not be able to recognize, you know, the, when someone's had a mental state that needs some, some assistance or attending to.
Or how to diffuse, how to diffuse it or calm them down.
Yeah, so that, that's real helpful, I'd like to see a lot for that as well, in depth, because so many times, people come into the center and many different, you know, you never know where they were before they got there, and it's always important to be prepared, I mean, we're not clinicians, of course.
Of course.
But we can at least recognize, so.
Right, and what questions to ask, I think that was more of how are we sensitive to the current situation, the scenario, sometimes it's not about them either being belligerent or not following through, or not being responsible, or what have you, and how to be compassionate, empathetic to the situation, and asking the correct questions, so that you're able to get the full story before we react with potential consequences or not, or resources if needed, and so I think that's where the staff was at, as far as what can we say, what can we say, what can we provide, we're not experts, and so we wanted to be respectful of those that are experts and clinicians, and be able to refer them to the appropriate agency entity individual that can provide those services to them, and so they gave us a thick book of all the various, and I'm sure it's not all-inclusive, but it was significant, and it was, it's easy to read, I'm happy to share with any of you, if you'd like to look at it, of the various different mental illnesses that, and what can be the potential issues, how to address it, resources for each one of them, and what to look out for, so it was, it was really good, I, I was appreciative, it was free, they even fed us, yeah. They were helping us out, but. There's various different ones, I can send the information to you, but there's, because they work with various different agencies that provide the training, and they're almost, I don't want to say a broker of it, but they do provide, work with different entities that provide the training, so it could be different companies or agencies that provide it.
Depending on the topic.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, anything else?
Senator, would you like to share, do you have something to share with us?
We're in transition at our program, and so I don't know when it will be my program, but I did want to introduce Carlos, my coworker, Acevedos, I know that there's a formal nomination process, but I didn't want him, he's our current employment liaison through social services, working with I L P, and so I did want him to kind of come and shadow, so, but I don't know when that time will come in regards to my movement. But I'm.
We're glad to see you go, we're happy to have Carlos, so.
I've enjoyed my time here, I've enjoyed getting to know the Rioa, the employment program, you know, when I first started, because I've been in I L P for the past ten years, and that's a long time, and so, you know, one of my first duties under Jaime's administration was that, you know, go out and reconnect, because the connection had been severed, as people, you know, leave and stuff like that, and so it was my joy to like reconnect with all of the Rioas, and it was a perfect timing, because that was Obama's administration, and he was, you know, doing the whole transition of the new Rioa that was coming in, and so I got to be a part of the whole California work development process and that, and just learning about the funding sources and how it's allocated in the different type of programs, so that was fun to learn, that was fun, and I really appreciate it, and I just want to actually say that one of, one of our things that came out of all of that, because that came, me being able to participate in that came out of the Foster Youth Outcomes Committee, which a couple of you attend, so it came through the Employment Subcommittee, and that Subcommittee created at the beginning what was called the Shining Star Award, right, where we recognized young youth that participated in the Rioa program, right, and so that's how it started, so here we are, nine years later, nine years later, four years ago, we got a co-sponsored through the Eddie Nash Foundation, because they were giving out scholarships to foster youth, former foster youth, and so because of the pandemic, they no longer had the access that they previously had, and so through our agency, we partnered with the Eddie Nash Foundation, and we now have what we call the Resilience Deal, where we highlight accomplishments from non-miner dependents and former foster and probation youth, and the Eddie Nash Foundation sponsors pretty much twenty thousand dollars scholarships.
Wow.
And so we've given out like every year that amount, and so that all stemmed from the employment program, the Employment Subcommittee from the Foster Youth Outcomes Committee, and this work that, that, you know, we all champion, that's it, and so like, I am going to send the email, so that you, because it's a nomination process, we've had winners from OCTAC that have been nominated, two years ago, one of their recipients won the Inspiration Award, which I think she got five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, so.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so, so, you know, I, he, the Eddie Nash Foundation, of course, you know, because they're sponsoring it, his, his focus is on trades, but also like on academic and inspirational nominees, and so, you know, and welcome any current former Orange County youth eighteen to twenty-four to be nominated.
That's great.
And I hear Jaime has retired.
Yes, there's a big transition.
Oh, my goodness.
It's about that time. Too much change.
Yes. We're right there, I think, I know, Jaime retired, we have a new director, his name is Deborah Mathi, Deborah Mathi, and then we, my immediate supervisor also retired, Lucas Chavez, they were all with the agency for thirty-plus years, so.
Other comments from council members? I'll share something, hearings, the topics of AI and mental health, I sit on a personnel commission in Garden Grove School District, which deals with the classified support staff and hiring of them, and you're seeing Garden Grove as well, other school districts that are hiring a lot of mental health interns, so school districts recognize. And you're seeing Garden Grove as well, other school districts that are uh hiring a lot of mental health interns. So school districts recognize them. Is to dip their toes and we'll just hire a few and then we'll need a lot more.
Yeah.
So um. If you know folks that are looking for potential. Getting their foot in the door with uh internship or others, uh school districts, very much school district. Um sitting on a personnel commission, we review job descriptions. And we're starting to see the need to encourage people that apply to have AI, some AI knowledge. We're all learning what this is and how it applies and and um somebody from a union background. I always say, well. It's gonna it's gonna replace people. We're already seeing layoffs, I think, that may be related to that. And um how do we? How do we help displaced workers that are displaced from this? So these are, it's it's something that we're learning to understand and something. Well, I was gonna ask you, Dr. Dr. Anna, about you've been doing this work for a long time. What do you see as the um evolution of the need for mental health?
It's critical. Right now, we have a mental health program at our agency and we have four interns. And I wanted to mention that to you from uh Pepperdine University. They're from the School of Psychology. They're getting their internship, doing counseling with our parents and youth. And uh I we can only hold four, but I get so many, so many applications for interns. So I, if you give me the contact for Garden Grove, I can forward, you know, the or you know, the the information.
Sure, if they're looking for employment.
Not employment, internships.
Internship, internship, well.
If you need more interns at the Garden Grove District.
If you go to their general website or you can also look on Edjoin.
Okay. Ensure that with them. I don't need more interns.
No.
They, we we have. Yeah, that's right. But but we get a lot, I I get a lot of. You know, applications, interns wanting to to do their internship at our agency and I had to reject a lot of them. Because we can only have four. Yeah, but we have a, you know, really great team of clinical supervisors that are overseeing. I will, I will. But mental health is so critical because. Like you said, it is so important and it is our population, the population that we serve. They need that support. They need this and the parents, the family. We've got so many dysfunctional families, unfortunately. Because of the circumstances and the situation with bullying at the schools hasn't improved that much. And unfortunately, our youth with disabilities, you know, are the ones that are targeted the most, unfortunately. Uh you know, foster youth also, but I I just, it just breaks my heart. So. Yeah, and and yeah, so this is really important. I'm I'm so happy you're doing those trainings, uh Sammy. We're we're doing more tra- we're gonna be doing more trainings for all the staff.
That's great.
Yeah.
So they're welcome to join if they actually is open. I mean, it is, I try to uh focus them for youth. Or in general, that can be used for us that are working with youth. I know I did ask for one in particular that was around COVID and the impact that COVID had on mental health. And how we're still dealing with that, not just for the youth, but in general and every individual, but it's specific for youth. And so they are, we are coordinating to get that training here too, because. I think inadvertently, we're still going to be dealing with the aftermath of COVID. And what how that impacted our youth, the education system in general, families. Um loss, the loss of, you know, something, loved ones.
Yeah.
Um at the big scale, but you know, the loss of prom, their senior year, the loss of certain opportunities that they needed to work for so long. And how that impacted the youth that we're currently working with.
That's great.
Oh, I have a comment related to the um AI and the robotics. They um I've been looking online to see. Schools that offer any kind of, you know, programs. And I know Coastline College has um courses. So I've been trying to meet some of our youth to see if they're interested. Um I I know that that's something you've talked about here. Um but I just thought that'd be cool to know. And I know you mentioned the other thing at Saddleback. So it's good to know what where else they're they're having something like that.
And with regards to AI, I think we need to start with just. Learning the terminology and learning that it's not just about robots. It's not just about Tesla. There's so much more to it. There's so many jobs that are related to it. These youths need to know. What different occupations they need to, if they're interested and the opportunities are gonna be available to them in the next coming ten years. Because of AI. So although individuals potentially may lose their jobs for it, there may be another opportunity within AI. If they know a specific system, application, how to fix the machine, how to do this. And so I think that's something that we need to start talking about with the youth and. Our our participants in general and of course the partners that we have, because I think there is this misconception that. You know, it's the Terminator and they're gonna. And it's not, and it's not, it's so much more as I went down, you know, the rabbit hole of.
That segment where, you know, like target, like they're, they wanna move away from the automated uh because they're losing money. So now they're bringing in, you know, maybe they're gonna teaming with the in-person registry. So it may not all, there's always a correction and adjustment, you know, to these new things, but um. But definitely, yeah, that was very good news.
And I anticipate there's gonna be a lot of changes. We're new to this whole AI thing. And so what. Starts with a certain great theme might be like, okay, well, maybe no, we could adjust it this way to make it more user-friendly or more. You know, if it's in a senior community, more senior um focus, et cetera. So I'm I'm excited to see what comes out of this and welcome you to. To it once we do get it rolling here at the work center. So that'll be fun.
Other input or comments before we adjourn the meeting from Youth Council Committee members? Okay, not hearing any. Thank you all for attending. Our next meeting will be uh April eleven.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for attending and making the trek out there, out here.
Very much.